Okay, great. Good evening and welcome to the October 14th, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 10th, 2013, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Mahmoud?
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, great. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are personnel matter and negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association and the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're now in closed session and we expect to return at 7:30. Hello, welcome. We're back. Welcome to the October 14th, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. We've just returned from closed meeting. I'd like to have a roll call, please. Mr. Mahmoud?
You. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Here.
Ms. Santafante?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Meeting is... If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have correspondence as it is listed in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it off to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have no report this evening, Mr. President.
Okay. All right, moving on, the agenda is the approval of minutes. First, we'll do the September 16th regular public meetings, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the September 16th, 2013 regular public meetings.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard Maureen.
You got it.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that passes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the September 16th, 2013 executive session minutes.
Seven.
All right, second.
Second.
Maureen? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, those are now official. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2013 regular public minutes. One second.
Second.
I heard you. Tuyen?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Again, this is for the regular minutes, our regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, that motion passes. And lastly, for the September 23rd, 2013 executive session minutes.
And so moved.
Second.
CP, Danae.
Gotcha.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good. Okay, moving on to new business. So first, we'll move it on to members of the public. For if you have new business that you would like to discuss, please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Danae Blevins, President of the Hillsborough Education Association. Before I begin my remarks, I'd like to publicly thank Board Member Tuyen Lee for while we were just standing out in the hallway as you came out of executive session. She was the only board member that went person by person through the entire crowd. And she made it her mission to read every single sign that every member was carrying. Thank you, Tuyen. As you can see, we are back in force. I was here at the last meeting saying that we, the HEA, and the Principals and Supervisors Association wanted the respect we deserve by having the board give us a fair and equitable contract. Well, since we are here tonight, I guess the public knows how that went. My members are tired, frustrated, and very angry. As I constantly tell them, you need to make sure your anger is directed at the right place. The state has put many mandates on the schools that has increased our workload. The state has forced on us more pension contributions that has helped our paycheck shrink increasingly every year. So I tell my members to get mad and let the state legislature know how you feel. While the school board doesn't have control over a lot of those things, but that does not mean you are without blame. New programs and initiatives, while they increase the quality of education, don't need to be initiated when so many state initiatives are coming down. When claims of lack of funds are expressed, then maybe new furniture, new technology, and travel to conferences shouldn't be approved. Maybe treating your employees with respect and as humans rather than numbers and statistics should be considered. My members are angry, and with good reason. My members are angry with you. Even if you are not on the negotiating committee, you are on this board, and it is time for you to start putting your pressure on your fellow board members. It is time to settle this contract and take care of the issues of compensation and workload that are literally destroying the education of this town. Thank you.
Good evening. Maria DeLucia, Instructional Assistant, Hillsborough Middle School, Second VP of the HEA. I'm sorry to say that I am still losing sleep. I'm still worried, and frankly, I'm upset. You did not answer the call to settle the contract last month, and I have seen no relief for the teachers and staff of this district. Well, I do know that an email was sent out today extending timelines, but this is really no true relief. I've not seen a settlement for our supervisors and principals either. I lay awake, and I wonder why. And I wonder, when will they all be given the respect they work so hard for every day? You are all aware of the increased workload imposed upon the staff by the board and the state, and the staff being overwhelmed by unreasonable demands. Last year, you received letters telling you of this, and at board meetings, you heard about it. I know this is no surprise to you, but we have not seen any change, and in fact, the work keeps piling on. This staff is at its breaking point. Adding to this, they feel disrespected by a board that will not provide a fair contract. I laugh sometimes when I think, Dr. Schiff, that when you started here, was it three and a half years ago, our biggest concern was the toilet paper. Now I can cry when I look at the lists of concerns and issues that we are facing. I quite frankly marvel at the money that's spent on computers and tech training. Yet, when a hands-on reading program is initiated, the teachers are not sent for training and have to teach themselves piecing together supplies and materials. I wonder what's happened to all the iPads we bought and used for the pilot program last year, and then stopped using them this year. I wonder what is being done with the money that our staff would have received had they not had their salaries frozen, buying more computers? You know, you don't buy a large flatscreen TV when you need to feed the family. I marvel at lesson planning software that crashes on a weekend, leaving teachers unable to complete their plans for the week. It's a challenge to get through any day when everything works. Some days, it feels like every time you turn around, something else isn't working, be it a computer, a computer program, or a copier. Did we do too much too fast? Absolutely. I marvel that Google is allowed to come into classrooms in this district to film a documentary on the Nexus 7 program. I marvel at how the district changed the middle school start times to save $900,000 in busing. Yet, I see that the busing, there were a lot of issues, and I wonder, what did we really And I wonder where is the public and why they're not asking these same questions? I've spent time listening to teachers from around the district longing for the days when teachers could teach, make learning fun, and were able to care for the whole child when it was not about meeting timelines and assessment schedules and student growth objectives and tech trainings. I listen to the confusion at the mixed messages and lack of clear and concise communication. I marvel that you have one of the best faculty and staff in this state who want to do nothing more than teach the wonderful students in Hillsborough, and still try, all while making time for assessments, SGOs, SGP's, PLCs, committees, meetings, trainings, parents, lesson planning, gradings, clubs, and homeschool activities. If you think that this is not negatively affecting the students, you are quite wrong, and overwhelmed, frustrated, and exhausted staff cannot maintain their A-game. Something has to give. Personally, as a parent, I would prefer a calm, happy, rested teacher in front of the class, and you should too. Very soon, all the extra things beyond the school day that teachers do for the betterment of the students will have to give. All the voluntary clubs, committees, before and after-school activities that are above and beyond our contracted hours will stop. Why? No one can physically or emotionally keep up the pace. With the extra workload, our families have suffered. Time with our families must take precedence over the volunteer hours we have given in the past. Many teachers have already taken on second jobs to make ends meet. And a few weeks ago during the board meeting, Mr. Gillette made an inflammatory statement about negotiations stating that "we would have settled if the teachers had not walked away from the table." As this comment was allowed, I hope you will allow mine. We would have settled if the Board of Ed had negotiated and not dictated. Negotiation involves a give and a take, and I can tell you that lately, we've been doing all the giving. Do not forget, our staff is paying more than any other district in the state for their They deserve better. This is what keeps me up at night, and I'm telling you, I'm getting really tired. Thank you.
My name's Tristan Garrettson. I'm the Hillsborough Middle School School Social Worker. I've been there for 21 years. I'm reading a letter tonight that was written by one of my colleagues, Jennifer Batista, who's a literacy teacher at the middle school. She's currently at her third job tonight, couldn't be here to read this, and asked me to read it for her. By the way, Jen's a master-level teacher with three jobs, yes. On September 11th, 2001, I was working in Lower Manhattan as an account executive for one of the largest advertising firms in the world. On that morning, I was sitting on a PATH train bound for the World Trade Center. When the first plane hit the North Tower, my train was rerouted back to New Jersey, and I hopped onto another train to get myself back into Manhattan, completely unaware of the horror that was unfolding. Shortly after the second plane hit the South Tower, my building was evacuated onto the West Side Highway. Shortly after that, I watched in stunned silence as both towers collapsed nearly 20 minutes apart. Why am I telling you about my experience on this day? Because that experience and the subsequent days that followed challenged me to finally get introspective, to reflect on my career trajectory, to decide what was important in my life and whether I was truly happy. And doing so caused me to make some changes. For most of my life, I had wanted to be a teacher. My parents were both middle school educators for 38 and 25 years respectively before retiring. And so I got my priorities in order and pursued my dream in 2002. In 2003, I was hired in Hillsborough, and I have been here ever since. My decision to enter education was an informed one. I knew very well that I would be taking a significant pay cut and that this move would certainly not be a lateral one. But that's pretty much the way it's always been. Educators have always earned far less than their peers, but at least there was a guarantee that not paying for health benefits would offset the lower salary. In addition, there was a pension, and there was more job security because even in a tough economy, our society will always need educators. Making a lower salary without the cost of health benefits made it possible to keep up with the cost of living, to pay our mortgage, to pay our bills, to feed our children, to pay for daycare, and to live modestly and happily. However, those times are gone, and they have been for quite some time. For me, three years ago was when my family's finances imploded. Paying for our health benefits coupled with a lower salary each year catapulted us right into debt. This is my story, but I can imagine most of my colleagues would say theirs is similar. The educators in this district are feeling underpaid, unappreciated, discouraged, angry, fearful, sick, tired, and most of all desperate. Why is it that most corporations offer financial incentives to recruit the best and the brightest talent, but when we in education dare to ask for an increase to ensure our very survival, we are labeled overpaid crybabies who should just be thankful that we have a job? If there's truly no money out there to pay the employees of this district a respectable salary, how can we afford the exorbitant costs of implementing the technology initiative, especially in a poor economy? It just doesn't make sense to me. Many of us are wondering if we can even stay in this profession, and that realization is utterly heartbreaking. We wonder how we can stay if we will never be able to make ends meet. Many of us will be forced to look elsewhere. Many of us know that the best teachers will choose to leave because of the board's failure to settle a contract. Many of us will be left with no other decision. What an incredible shame that would be for our students, for our schools, and for our community, our family here in Hillsborough. Keep the talent that we have here in Hillsborough, please. This is the sad state of affairs in which we find ourselves, and we just want it to end. The time has come to show the administrators, teachers, and other staff in this district just how much we are valued, respected, and cared for. We are your employees, yes, but we are also, like you, parents and taxpayers in our own right. Many of us are your neighbors and your friends. Wouldn't you treat your neighbor and your friend with dignity and respect? Wouldn't you do anything to ensure your neighbor's or your friend's survival? Wouldn't you do anything to help? Just like those friends and family members, we need your help now, not tomorrow or the next day. Respectfully, Jennifer Batista. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garrettson, for sharing. This is Batista's letter.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jennifer Harmson. I teach seventh graders Ancient History at the middle school. I've been teaching for 23 years. Seventeen of those years have been in Hillsborough. You know, I want to share something with you tonight that I've been thinking about for a long, long time. I've told a few of my friends, and now I want to make it public. I would like to invite any one of you to live with me for a week. Now, this is not a proposition. I'm a married woman. My husband... My husband is in the audience. He knows I'm extending this invitation. But I want you to see what it's like to live with a teacher. I want you to see the joys. I want you to see the rigor, and I want you to see the constancy of teaching. I want you to know what it's like to be a teacher. Now, the reason why I'm extending this invitation to you is because I'm concerned about a couple of things. My first concern is about the divisiveness that the stalemate in the contract is causing. And at this time, at this stage, we cannot afford not to come together as a community for the education of our children. The second reason why I'm extending this invitation is because I'm concerned also about the way we're thinking about education, and the fact that we need to think differently about education. I'm concerned that we're thinking about education and the organization of a system of education like any other organization. And I have a visual I want to share with you to help illustrate my point. I'm sure you're familiar with capital. Capital, that which an organization has that is of value to that organization. Organizations like automobile companies have capital. They have manufacturing plants. They have their equipment. They have their automobile inventory. That capital is worth something to them. It has value. Pharmaceutical companies have offices, research and development facilities, and medicines, drugs coming down the pipeline. That's value to them. That's their capital. Organizations and public school systems like Hillsborough Public Schools have capital too. We have our nine schools. We certainly know that's worth something, they're worth something of value. But we have a different kind of capital. We have a capital that's called human capital. And that human capital consists of our administrators, our teachers, our support staff. That human capital is also our precious students. And so when you look... When you look at these, at this capital, side by side, it begs the question, which is more important? What kind of value do you put on human capital? The capital, like the teachers, administrators, and support staff that drive this system, that make it successful, that make you proud to be a community member here in Hillsborough and a part of the Hillsborough Board of Education. What value do you place on the capital that we're producing? The students who will one day grow up to be adults and sustain our economy so that organizations like automobile companies and pharmaceutical companies can stay afloat? What value do you place on our students, our human capital, who will one day become adults and uphold our democratic process? What value do you place on the human capital that we're producing? The students who will one day become adults and know how to contribute to our society? Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for thinking about education differently. I thank you for thinking about the human capital, and I sincerely hope that one of you will accept my invitation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy Westusen, and I'm a parent here in Hillsborough. And I just wanted to come and express my concern that my children's teachers are here tonight instead of home lesson planning and getting ready for the day tomorrow. I'm concerned that this is going on in Hillsborough. I admit, I don't know all the issues, and I'm sure that there are a lot of issues on both sides. But I have to commend all of the teachers and support staff and principals that they have not been complaining to parents, have not made the children feel that there's a problem. And really, it's sort of been a secret, I think, because a lot of us were unaware that this is going on. But we are aware of all kinds of new programs that are going on in the school this year, that there are things that are being implemented, and we want to make sure that we still have access to our teachers and our principals and support staff when we have questions. And so, parents, I, as a parent, am very concerned, and I hope that this issue is resolved quickly. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Sue Dicenzo, 131 South Triangle Road. I am a teacher of 23 years in this district and a lifelong resident, and also a parent. This coming November, I have a 30th High School Class of '83 reunion, and I was speaking to my committee. I defend Hillsborough when anybody says anything derogatory about the education I got here and the education we give our students. I love this town. I love these children. And tonight, I am very sad, very sad, for the children, and for the staff, and for my colleagues in this town. I found a quote from Einstein, and in this day and age, when our children have tablet time, but they don't have snack time to talk to each other, because they don't, it's working snack now, but they have time for tablets. They don't have time to be human. Not everything that can be counted counts, and not everything that counts can be counted. Last spring, I stood in front of this board, and I waged the cupcake wars. You may or may not know about it. My friends still call me Cupcake. The board promised, and the board told the media, "We call a truce on the cupcake wars." I said, "Yay, we won for the kids. They can still be kids. They can have cupcakes. They can have parties." Well, the principals got together, and I don't know if the Board of Ed knows this, some of the members, but the mandate now is we have three parties. We have a Halloween party, no food allowed. We have a winter party with suggestive foods, no baked goods allowed, cereal, fruit, snacks, and then no Valentine's Day party. Your children, who are in elementary school, will no longer celebrate a Valentine's Day party, and we will have an end-of-the-year party. This makes me sad. These are children. These are children. It makes me sad. It makes me sad that I don't have time to teach because I'm constantly assessing. And I want to promise the parents here tonight, all of you, we're not giving up on your kids because we know that the things that can't be counted and put into data, they matter. And your kids are going to matter whether we get a contract tomorrow, six months, six years. We're going to be here for your kids. Thank you.
That's it for new business. Thank you for coming out and speaking. The Board sincerely appreciates that. Regarding contract negotiations, and I'm saying this both for the audience here and also the audience who'll be watching this outside of this meeting. Negotiations is about attaining a settlement that is agreeable to both parties. And so I'd like to give some information, some background on the negotiations that we've had so far this year. So we started negotiations with the HEA in January of 2013. We've had multiple meetings throughout the springtime. At the meeting in May, which was in early May, the HEA Negotiations Committee leadership declared and passed and filed for mediation. Since that time, so that was the beginning of May, the next meeting that was scheduled with the mediator, which was the first meeting which was scheduled for the mediator, was held on September 30th. We had that meeting, and it was agreed by both parties that we would continue with mediation. At the time of the September 30th meeting, the next scheduled meeting was December 3rd. We've worked to be able to schedule an earlier meeting for October 22nd. The district is facing many needs and constraints. There is explosive... There is explosive healthcare benefit cost increases, while also trying to maintain a level of educational excellence. The constraints that we have as a district is that there's a 2% cap on the local tax levy, which makes up a portion of the funds that are raised for the school district. We've had a recent history of little state aid increases, and as everybody knows, the economy has been depressed for the past couple of years. The HEA, respectfully, represents their membership, and the board represents the district and the public and the taxpayers. As we have, we've continued to approach negotiations in a respectful manner, and we look forward to continuing our active negotiations to attain an agreement, a settlement that is acceptable to both parties. So, thank you. Continuing on with the board meeting, we do not have committee reports. So I would now like to open the floor to comments from the public. I'm sorry, we have new business from the board members. So Mrs. Lay, I know that you wanted to mention something about the SBA.
Yeah. So, for the Hillsborough Board, I'm the rep for the County School Boards Association. So I went on October 3, and Judy, Ms. Haas, joined me. And the topic was legal issues in technology and social media. So it was very relevant to what we're doing here in Hillsborough. And I took some notes, basically that we should consider having confidentiality provisions in vendor contracts for the students. And also, that it was interesting because this meeting was targeting school board members. And they talked about how even our texting is considered, you know, if we're texting on, like during a meeting, that is considered public information, so beware. It was very interesting. And she gave some case studies about technology. And what I think, and I was going to hand it over to Mr. Mahmood, but what we should consider also is that there are two federal laws, Children's Internet and Protection Act and the Neighborhood Children's Internet Protection, and they should be included in our policies. And I think we're also reviewing tomorrow at the Education Committee meeting, the HIB policy, some adjustments to that. So we'll look at it with this perspective, too. And also, it gave the county a chance to summarize some of the information that they did over the summer. And they wanted to stress that there are a lot of unfunded mandates that the state is, I shouldn't say making, but, for example, the bullying, anti-bullying requirements that we have to perform are underfunded, actually, because eventually, they did give some money. So there's a lot of things that the state is asking us to do, and we don't have the funds allocated for it. So it's something that we have to be thinking about as a school district. And just to support the Hillsborough Raider Marching Band, they had their festival on Saturday, and they had 19 bands there. Seventeen were competing. And what I think is a great takeaway is the amount of support that parents had for their students so that they can do their best and perform for their school. And this year's theme is, it's called "A Defiant Heart." And the back of the shirt says, "A Successful Team Beats With One Heart." So it's something to think about. And at their last competition in South Brunswick, they won the Mayor's Cup as number one in Group Five. And I just want to say, I don't have any kids in the band, so.
You're an alum parent. Any other new business from board members? Okay. Moving on to comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Okay, seeing on comments from the board will take on during the action agenda itself. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions in the area of education to approve travel-related expenses, common assessment development, the HIB investigation list, overnight field trips is listed, and we do have the Red Ribbon Proclamation. I'd like just to take a quick moment to read the proclamation to the public. Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by the community members be launched to reduce the demands for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership and the District Life Skills Committee are sponsoring National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitments to drug-free lifestyles, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23 through the 31, 2013, and whereas President Barack Obama and Mrs. Michelle Obama are the national honorary chair people to provide this national focus on a drug-free America, and whereas business, government, law enforcement, schools, religious institutions, service organizations, youth, physicians, senior citizens, military, sports teams, and individuals will demonstrate their commitment to drug-free, healthy lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the educational community of Hillsborough further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education does hereby support October 23 through the 31, 2013 as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages its students and its employees to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Be it further resolved that the Hillsborough Township Board of Education encourages its students and employees to pledge, "A Healthy Me Is Drug-Free." Also, we would like you to consider approving the field trip destination as listed.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A6 of the action agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mrs. Haley.
I think this probably goes to Dr. Antunes. I was just curious, under A2, why we're at 9, 11, and 12 for core assessment development and where 10 is. Did we do 10 last year, or is 10 not required for? It was just a little weird to me.
I believe 10 is broken up with driver's ed. And so the curriculum is curriculum for driver's ed.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Thank you. Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration for the motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve the resignations as listed, to rescind leaves of absence, to approve revised leaves of absence, to approve revised long-term substitutes, to approve revised contracts, to rescind the contracts as listed, approve leaves of absences, and the appointments of a teacher, long-term substitute, nurse, personal assistant, technician, co-curricular advisors, coaches, volunteer coaches, mentors, substitutes, transportation staff, and instructional assistants to work with students with disabilities after school during their co-curricular time, and approve payment for kindergarten teacher-student orientation, and approve summer work as listed. We do have a correction on B-7.2. The leave time should read January 2, 2014, through March 14, 2014. I ask that we change it at the days.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion for items B1 through B13 with the amended item B7.2.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Could we separate 8.6?
The 8.6?
Yes.
Okay.
B8.
Got it. The entire, the entire, the entire one. That's fine. Good. Any other discussion? All right. So this vote is for B1 through B13, amended B7.2 with B8.6 omitted. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B8.6 of the action agenda.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to approve line item transfers, awarding the transportation contracts, accept the donation from Steps Together of over $1,100 donation to Borough Safe, and we thank them for their generous donation.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C3.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Bogushevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on. Any old business from board members? Actually, I would do old business first to the public. Sorry, I did.
Dana Blevins, President of the Hillsborough Education Association. Since Mr. Kins allayed a little bit about negotiations after our former remarks, I thought I would get up and just clarify a few things for both the audience here and the audience at home. He mentioned constraints of the board with contract negotiations as being exploding healthcare costs and the 2% cap. With the exploding healthcare costs, I just wanted to point out that there are options out there, such as the state health benefits plan that offers many, many plans that could save money. And as far as the 2% cap, this district has never gone to it. We are still spending money on initiatives and technologies, and I think Maria put it best earlier when she said, "You don't buy a flat-screen TV when you can't pay your mortgage or put food on the table." The HEA did declare impasse on May 1, and the reason we declared impasse was because the last settlement we were given was well below what the county average was for settlements in this area, yet we were still paying the highest in healthcare costs in the state, which we still are. And the mediation session, while we did have one mediation session, I'm not sure you could call it that, since the only thing that was offered was exactly what was offered on May 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Evening. My name is Henry Goodhue. I stand before you as a teacher, a taxpayer, and a parent of Hillsborough. Originally, I had no intent of speaking tonight, but following the remarks that the board stands for the interests of the town, the interests of the taxpayers, the interests of the parents, I would say that while I'm not here to argue that point of view, that it may not be completely factual because the reason I came to Hillsborough was because of the education system. I was hired directly out of college. I've spent 10 years of my life here. I'm raising my daughter here. And I can tell you right now that what is going on does not represent my interests as a taxpayer and surely does not represent my interests as a parent. One of the main reasons my wife and I agreed to settle in this town was education. That is the main reason. There were cheaper, larger houses we could have bought in other towns and possibly paid to send our daughter elsewhere, but we knew that the education provided by Hillsborough was par none the best. We are compromising that by what we are doing here. That does not represent the interests of this town. It does not represent the business interests of this town, which will suffer if the school suffers. Because as we have been noted in every business magazine and every money magazine, as Hillsborough moves up in its ranking as a quality place to live, the number-one thing that is noted is the education system. And the business community... The business community has a direct relationship with the schools. We bring people to the town that provide business for those places. There are empty storefronts in Hillsborough. There will be more if the schools suffer. That is something I would ask you all to think about when you say that your interests represent those of Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back up here again because there's a few things that I still wanted to say that really are better served here in old business. I marvel, again, at the irony of how instructional assistants were sent emails instructing them on what is expected of them for their October 4 in-service, the night before, and some got them the morning of, when we have no computer access to read this information. We ended up having to spread the word person to person, you know, the old-fashioned way. Our valuable time was then spent doing some of 20 mandatory training modules on such things as fire extinguishers, secretions, first aid, and bullying, to name a few. That's all right. But how wonderful it would have been to have been trained in the computers and devices that our students are using so that we could actually help the students we work with. That's one. Three weeks ago, or maybe it was earlier in September, you responded very quickly to a veteran that found offensive, a fat flag painted on the floor mat that children had walked over for 14 years. It was quickly removed to be repainted. Conversely, we had a team of teachers last year that wanted to take a trip to the Battleship New Jersey near Veterans' Day, and because it was not curriculum-based, it was denied. I think sometimes the best learning is through experience, and not all learning can be measured in a test. What a wonderful opportunity was lost when these students could have walked the ship, talked with veterans, and learned about those that fought for our country and have had an opportunity to say thank you. And as a proud daughter of a World War II Navy veteran, that offended me. Thank you.
Any old business from the board? Informational items are as they are presented in the agenda, and now I would like to entertain a motion to...
Actually, Mr. Kins, I do have a quick question about the information with regard to fire drill and evacuation. Dr. Schiff, if you could just explain the difference to me, what is required with the fire drill versus the evacuation? I'm going to assume evacuation is complete building, moving away, because 25 minutes at the high school seems like a very long time.
When we, there's various emergency activities that we have. So we have fire drills, active shooters, lockdown, evacuation. Each of those may take an excessive amount of time to get the kids out, move them to an alternate location, take attendance, move them back in, depending upon how that situation went. I believe that the one that's being referenced here was an actual alarm that went off that particular morning. So rather than have two additional drills which take additional instructional time, we counted that. And the reason why it was 25 minutes is we needed to wait for the police department, the fire department to come in to clear the facility and to give us a thumbs up before we come back in.
I wasn't sure. Because the way that I would read that would say it took 25 minutes to leave the building.
No, 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 no. It's typically about two minutes it takes to leave.
Okay. Thank you.
All cycle time. All right. I'll entertain a motion...